It's four o'clock, you ready? Call to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Andres Hernandez.
Present.
Commissioner Lesar Juajardo.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo. Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Chaflores. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Is Commissioner Carrillo coming, or did he? All right, do a motion to excuse.
Motion to excuse, absent members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, we are overwhelmed by the current situation. We can hardly find words, but we know you understand what we are going through. Oh Father, help. We know you promised to never leave us or forsake us. Be with us now, help us know you are with us. And give us the strength we need today to make it through this trial. Give us hope that only can come from you. In your name we pray, amen.
Hello? Public testimony? Anybody? I don't have two public testimony, anybody sign up?
Can we call people now? Welcome Senator. Always great to see you here.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to join with you this afternoon. When I decided to come here, I had heard from the Democratic Chairwoman, Ms. Ramirez, and also other members of the party, Democratic Party, who had urged me to come to petition, all of you, to see if we could have use of the Event Center in this all-American city. And I agreed that I would come. Since then, obviously, the prayer that we just heard says it all in terms of our major concern, a major concern that we have because of the coronavirus that obviously is hitting us hard in most parts of the country. I have been briefed since then by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor. Both caucuses have been briefed. I know one thing, Mayor, that ever since I've met you, you've put community above everything, except God, God, community, and family. And I certainly agree with you. And I am proud to join with you in thinking about community first today. Whatever decision you make in this request that the party has at this time, I would hope that you would put community first. I am very concerned, not only about my district, but also the whole valley, the whole state of Texas, our country, and our neighbors to the south, who are very, very close by. And I know that this virus will have a major impact in the health of our people, but also in the economic impact, a negative economic impact that it would also have. Families struggling, and I just, I'm very concerned about the overall impact that will be taking place. I'm very concerned about the number that I heard of those that will be infected. It's cause for alarm for me to do everything I can to work with you, listen to you and the Commission, who know better than I do, and the Governor and the President of this country, what the needs are for your community, our community here. So, I'm here to join with you in whatever decision you make, and also ask our party leadership and members to be cognizant of the fact that all of us elected by the people in this community and other parts of the valley are wanting us to make the right decision for them. So, with that, I thank you for this moment, having an opportunity to come before this Commission, who I consider, as I mentioned so many times before, one of the most proactive Commissions I've ever dealt with in my 34 years as a state legislator. I thank you for your leadership and hope and pray to God that, you know, that we can return to times that we've enjoyed in the past where we can practice our culture and hug and kissing people, our families, our friends, and show the true love that we carry in our hearts for them, for everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Senator, I want to thank you. I know you don't have to be down here in this neck of the woods, and it is your district first and foremost, and I'm one of your constituents, so I'm very proud of it, and I'm very happy that you're here. It's a surprise to have you here, but I'm glad you're here, and I understand the endeavor you're asking about. And you're right, I mean, the City of Far has always been, and will continue to be, a beacon of hope for the citizens of Far, in the Rio Grande Valley for that matter. We always will put our constituents first, their health first, above all, for anything that we do. As you were aware of, we were the first to issue the emergency declaration after this coronavirus, in a proactive manner. We did it because we knew it was important for our citizens to realize the gravity of the situation and how, as you had, like we put it, how it's about to get worse before it gets better. And we realize that it's a major problem for us. We are very cognitive of the fact that it's going to have an economic impact on all of us. And we're going to be elaborating on the fact with our school districts, who are represented here as well. We're going to be having a discussion of what other additional moves we're making as a Commission, because we need to really hunker this thing down. We understand that that curve people keep talking about, which will be, which is illustrated to your left on posters, and we're going to show it to the public. We really need to get that curve, the infections rate that's happening, down, where it's a manageable number for the healthcare system in the Rio Grande Valley and for this nation. And part of the endeavors we're going to do is we're going to elaborate in a bit with the school districts, which you're going to be proud of, of those school districts. And all five school districts will be participating, as you will find out shortly. But we are aware of the importance of this event that you're alluding to. Our Chairwoman, Ms. Ramirez, is behind you, and I'm sure she's going to come up in a minute and discuss it as well. And we take all the requests seriously and put it as a priority, especially coming from your office. You've been a great champion for the entire state of Texas, especially for the City of Far, and we're very proud to have you here with us this moment, and thank you for your words.
I just want to finish by saying that I know each one of you, I know your background, I know that you have an incredible background and experience to be able to lead this community. You and Dr. Caballero, obviously, are with, you know, just a little extra special because you're doctors, and that helps also better understand the needs of our community when it comes to, you know, the medical issues that are at hand. But all of you together form what I believe is a special team for this community, and I hope to work alongside of you and anyone else that cares to put, put the citizens first. That's what we were elected to do.
That's right.
And I thank you for an opportunity to come before you. Thank you.
Anybody have any commentaries?
No, I'd just like to thank, you know, Senator Lucio. I mean, you are, really mean a lot to this Commission, and you are highly respected here, just to let you know that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Ramirez?
Honorable Mayor.
Welcome.
And distinguished Commissioners, I thank you very much for the opportunity to be before you, and I am humbly asking that you allow us to go on with the event. We're fully aware of the coronavirus, and I myself personally, coronavirus, I'm personally taking this matter very seriously and have been for over 60 days. My family, and my company, and my employees have all prepared, and we have prepared as best as we can. And we also think that the devastation and the economic impact will be serious, and we don't know where it'll be, but we know that the road that's to come is not a good one, and we hope that somehow we can contain this horrible virus. I am asking you to please allow us to go on with the event, because the law says that we have to convene on that day. We have made a contingency plan to make sure that we do not have more than 30 or 40 people there at a time. We plan to register them individually and send them along their way. This is a plan so that we can make sure that the coronavirus is not spread, and we try to do as much as we can on that day. We plan to do as much as we can to have as many people there, and if we do get an infle- we're already reaching out to a lot of our people and planning the event. It is a morning event, it is, we plan to try to have it anywhere between 8:00 and 10:00, 10:30. We will have people there in case we have other individuals show up. So, because the law requires us to convene on that day, and that is the day when people, we will get delegates to go and be able to represent our community. So, it is important that we realize that we have gone through great lengths to make sure that we convened at the Far Event Center. And we know that this Commission in the past has been very generous to our party. And so, again, I agree with Mr. Lucio that this is a very, very tough decision, and unfortunately that date cannot be changed. So, I am humbly asking you to please allow us to convene on that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. With that, I'll have Chavez Salinas, Superintendent Hidalgo, and Dr. Garcia, Neshu Garcia as well, and our President for PSJA's School District, Mr. Jorge Palacios. Can you guys come up for a minute? And is anybody here from Valley View, after all?
Jorge doesn't fit, he's too big, so.
And I'll be speaking in behalf of Idea as well. Tom was able to make it. So, in light of that topic, gentlemen, I want to thank you guys and the school districts for, we have previous conversations already that I'm going to share with the public. The City Commission is deeply troubled with what's happening in our health system, and the fact that it appears that we might be going to a position where we may get overloaded. And we're very honored to be working with you, three gentlemen, and the other school district, Idea and Valley View, with the following. We know that the school districts have already taken proactive measures to limit the contact with students, which would spread the virus, because we have a lot of asymptomatic patients out there, and some will be children, passing it on to the adults. And we are very appreciative that you guys, you gentlemen, have that foresight and have pushed the amount of time that students will be out, and also for agreeing with the City of Far in the following. We see as a priority, and therefore the City of Far, in collaboration with the five school districts, will be extending the amount of time that people are, children are not going to be in school. It is obviously two weeks, but if so, if it's necessary for us to bend that curve to minimize the growth of that virus in our nation, in our community, the City of Far will contact you that we are going to go longer, and if need be, we'll go weeks, months, if need be, but no child will attend school in the City of Far until this is under control. And we're very fortunate to have great partners and understanding partners such as yourself and Idea and Valley View as well, to commit to that, to be able to understand that what we're trying to do together, not a unilateral dictatorship. We're doing it together. And with PSJA, as you know, we've been working with you with the internet. We've been, we were the first to get this done, to push out the internet, and now even more so is it vitally important. And we had the foresight to have started those programs, and it's branching out with Vanguard, and branching out with Hidalgo, and soon Valley View. Look at where we're at now. Without internet broadband coverage, where would our children be? Where would our population be? They're being locked down soon to their homes. They need access to public service, they need access to pay their bills, to order food, to keep the education system alive. Everybody's pushing it to online, the blackboard, and I'm so proud of our endeavors that we've done together, that we're ahead of the curve in that regard. And the City is here to prepare, to partner with you. If we need to go and buy our hotspots, if we need to go and move tablets, laptops, whatever you guys deem necessary for our community, for our children throughout the City of Far, we're going to partner with you to make sure that gets done, because I know it is for us, it is for you gentlemen here. Education is a priority, so we are here to be your partner. I want to thank you for you guys for stepping up to the plate and agreeing to be our partners to that endeavor. And with that, I'll let you guys make a few comments, if you still speak on your behalf.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for the foresight and Commission, for making this decision with us. I know the health of our kids is so important to us each and every day. This is an everyday cycle that we go through, just thinking, what can we do better, what can we do to make our kids safe, our community? And I think this is a good decision for us, so we will adhere to the recommendation. And I know that I got your IT guys information, because we do have a huge amount of kids that are at South Texas College, at UTRGB, so we will tap into that broadband, that we need to get that online program going on with the university. So, Mayor Borosso, Commissioners, thank you for being partners with Hidalgo ISD. And we always say everywhere, Hidalgo ISD is the place to be.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you for everything. Thank you, Mayor, and I know we spoke this morning.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, thank you so much for partnering with Vanguard Academy, and a good thing is, obviously, we didn't see, you know, this happening, right? But I was sharing with a couple of people back there that, when I first got there, we only had 500 devices district-wide. And as of this year, we have 4,500 devices. We have 4,487 students, so we have one device per student, and a little bit more. And we're purchasing some hotspots, we ordered them today, and for those that don't have Wi-Fi, right? And we talked about that this morning.
Yes, sir.
And also some more laptops for teachers that might have to do distance learning with our students. So, we're ready and we're set, and we're ready to continue partnering with the City of Far and any other institution that needs our help. That's what we're here for.
Thank you, Doctor. President Palacios.
Excuse me. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
How are you?
We're good.
Thank you, thank you for inviting us here, and just, you know, to the Mayor and to the Commission, on behalf of the School Board here at PSJA, I just want to thank you for what you've done. We've been, I've been in contact with the Superintendent since last week, daily. I've been at Central Office when the team was there last week, working on a plan to make sure that we have the necessary tools for our students to be successful, in case something like this did occur. We know that the City is, you know, we're going to work with you on this issue.
Yes, sir.
I think that we really need to focus on the safety, the security, and the health of our kids and our staff, and so whatever it takes, working with you is what we're going to do to make sure that we get through this together. And, you know, I've put out stuff on Facebook, and the Superintendent has, and we're really, we're really concerned about what's happening, but at the same time, we're also concerned about, like I said, the welfare of our students and our staff, and so, working together with you, and if this is what it takes, and, you know, then we need to do whatever we can to make sure that they stay safe. So, thank you again for having us here, and thank you for working with us always on all the partnerships that we've done.
Absolutely. And I'm so proud of our Commission, and I say this in front of these ladies and gentlemen, because they're always at the forefront, trying to push the envelope and being sure that they're proactive rather than reactive. One of the things that came up for our Commissioner, several of them, is what about our kids that are, you know, depend on meals? And I told them, I assured them, look, the gentleman, all the representatives will be here, and it's my understanding that some will have drive-throughs, some will have delivery. Those that can't, the City of Far will be more than happy to help you package and send out meals to some of those families, but nobody, no child goes out a meal, and that was a message that all of you echoed, that that was a priority in addition to education. You don't want food to go to waste, but also you want people to have warm meals.
We are, well, here in PSJA, we're putting out something actually today. We will start ASAP with the meals, maybe not tomorrow, I think by Wednesday, we'll be providing meals for all of our students.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, in accordance with Section 551.071 to 551.087, the Texas Government Code, the Far Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is meeting an executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being 4:19. Thank you.
Four City Managers Report, Sales Tax. Yes, sir. For all practical purposes, if you account for everything, we're up 9.71%. There are a couple of factors in there, a one-time payment from, was it? Who was it from? Oh, yeah, my bad, sorry. Yeah, I was not supposed to say so. With all the quantifiers in there, we are actually down 1.1%.
Okay.
So, but it'll come back up, usually does. Sales tax report, sales tax is still on track, with the difference in the tax rate, we're actually up dollars. We're doing good. City Events of Interest, I only have one for you tonight. As part of our continuing efforts to improve public service, when we, when the dog catchers catch a stray dog, we quarantine it, we put it at our facility, we house it for a couple of days. We did look into, we had, staff had a good idea of chipping the dogs, put in a chip in them, so the dog catcher catches them, swipes them, we know exactly who they belong to. It's about $10,000 to chip, how many dogs, Peter? 2,000 dogs? That's the average that we're doing when we do the citywide rabies clinic. So, next time we do a rabies clinic, we're going to offer the chipping for free, we're going to drop the cost, it'll cut down on our cost in housing and feeding the dogs at our facility and the way we met the dogs.
Are you going to filter that, so that way the entire valley doesn't show up?
Yes, sir. No, it's only City of Far, the.
How are you going to filter that?
Water bill.
Water bill, okay.
Yes, sir.
Just so people know.
Yes, sir, same thing we do with the rabies clinic.
Okay.
Water bill. Okay, consent agenda, all items are routine, non-controversial. If you want to take up one item, you need to pull it out.
To pull out item C? Item C?
Okay. Item C is pulled out, all the rest of items can be voted in one motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any commentary? No commentary? Okay. In the, so, I'll make the commentary, then, in the interest of our City, as we have discussed many a times in this last few weeks, in the interest of our health being the priority, and the economy obviously follows, we are, this is being pulled for that reason, we need to be sure that our constituents are taken care of. As you alluded to before, Senator, at the earlier meeting, we are partnering also with the school districts to, all five school districts, to increase the amount of time students are going to be away from school. We're doing that also by providing internet access with them, so they can stay at home, continue their education, also be able to pay their bills and have public safety at their hands, given the 311 app that we have created. All this is being done in coordination, following CDC guidelines, and most recently, from the White House, it just announced, maybe an hour ago, that all contacts should be limited to less than 10 people. So, it's, obviously, it's a moving target. It's a moving target for a reason, because infectious rate is pretty high. If every person's infected, two usually wind up getting infected thereafter. It's a lot of people with no symptoms walking around that have not been tested, so we don't know what the true infectious rate is in the Rio Grande Valley, which is what we're concerned about, and therefore to tamper that, and as we have already demonstrated by our graphs that we provided to the public, we want to be able to move that curve down, flatten it out, that way we do not overwhelm our health system. Our health system is a very good health system, it's probably the best, it is the best in the world, but at the same time, it can only handle so much capacity. We can't build a hospital overnight, or ICU beds immediately overnight, because you need doctors, respiratory therapists, other infrastructure. We're not capable of doing that, and we don't want to be, as our colleagues have in Italy, deciding who lives and who dies because we didn't prepare properly. So, the City is taking proactive measure again. We first did it by declaring emergency, we're doing it now, that we're going to extend the schools out of time, that they're going to be with the five school districts, they've agreed to do with us in partnership, by extending the internet service so they can go to school via blackboards, and also adhering to the CDC guidelines, there will be no events in the City of Far until further notice, until we are able to combat this pandemic that's affecting the entire world. And with that, I need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm sorry, Mayor, I thought he was.
Okay, so.
I'm for, I'm for, Mayor.
All right, so, unanimous, all in favor? Okay, nobody opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to 6A.
We approved his consent agenda.
We approved the consent.
We need to vote on that.
All right. That was a consent agenda, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion.
All right. Okay, so, now, consideration action and action request from Dow County Democratic Party, right, that's what we're referring to, for the use of the Far Event Center on Saturday, December 21st, 2020, for a political event and the waiving associated rental fees.
No, you pulled it, now we have to vote on it.
Yes, that's how it works.
Move for denial? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Next item.
We're back on track. 6A, consideration action affecting ordinance setting guidelines and framework for neighborhood empowerment zone slash business improvement district 2020 dash 01, third and final reading, and it needs to be untabled.
Motion untable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's untabled.
Yes, sir, staff is recommend, recommend approval, third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. 6B, consideration action affecting ordinance amending Chapter 110 of the FAR Code of Ordinances, creating Article 8 residential collection station, providing for collection and disposal, defining terms, and prescribing rates, is the first reading.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Go ahead.
They already read it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Two more readings.
It passes. Mm-hmm. C.
Yes, sir. C, consideration action affecting ratifying solution, correction, on ratifying the continuing declaration and continued declaration of a disaster and public health emergency in the City of Far.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
6D, consideration action affecting resolution determining a public necessity to acquire certain real property, giving notice of an official determination to acquire real property for public purpose, establishing procedures for the acquisition of market value for the property to be acquired, directing the City Manager or designee to communicate offers to owners for the purchase of the property, appropriate funds, authorized condemnation proceedings by the City Attorney, and contingent on available funding. Yes, sir, this is for South First Street, there's a property we need to acquire, and it's a resolution to do it.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. E, consideration action affecting a resolution appointing, reappointing five members to Community Development Council. Yes, sir, there's one that no longer wishes to serve, and four wish to be reappointed. I don't know if y'all had names already picked out or not.
I don't. Does anybody have recommendation? Any of the Commissioners?
I thought you were recommending Ole Cardosa to replace the one that's not.
Raul? Raul's board.
Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, Commissioners, yes, we, Mr. Ruben Solis has decided to retire, resign, and he's been with us for like 29 years or something like that. Ole Cardosa is interested in serving.
Okay, there was a motion in the second already for Ms. Cardosa. You're not opposed of any ways you're performing?
No, she's good.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
And those who served to reappoint, the rest of them, right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we're good. F, consideration action affecting on resolution authorizing Fire Department to submit a grant application to the US Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for its FY15 assistance to firefighter grants program for the purchase of firefighter equipment. Yes, sir, we're applying $467,000 in radios to replace old equipment at the Fire Department.
Move for approval. Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. G, consideration action defending on resolution entering into an agreement with Tech Department Transportation for the closure of West Old Business 83 between Palm and Astro Street for the purpose of conducting the Vanguard Academy 5K for children with special needs Saturday, May 23rd, 2020. Yes, sir, I understand, we are, we just passed the disaster declaration, we're going to go ahead and recommend to approve this one since it is in May. If the, can we make a motion contingent? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because they're, make a motion contingent on how we are with the coronavirus. So I was going to suggest.
Commissioner Medina seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Seven A, consideration, action, if any, on change order number two for the city of FAR, FAR National Bridge Expansion and Renovations Project. Yes, sir, this is the actual change order for the work being done, this is LED lights, wiring for the generator, stuff like that. It's a hundred thousand dollars added to the project.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. One abstention. Go ahead.
Seven B, consideration, action, if any, on permission to advertise for a request for qualifications for construction manager for the North Side Event Center, and granting permission to the city manager to negotiate into a contract for such services, project nineteen twenty, oh-one-five-ten-S-zero-thirty-two-dash-six-one-one.
Okay.
Yes, sir, this is to get a construction manager for the new North Side Event Center we're, we're looking to build in.
So move.
Second. Mayor, discussion?
Discussion, yes, sir.
I thought we wanted to wait and see what was going to happen with the, with the reimbursement for businesses after we did some.
Well, thank you, yes, sir, let me clarify, but thank you, Senator Lucio, once again, has helped the city of FAR, he was able to give us a couple of million dollars actually for, for this project, so we're going to move forward with that, grant money, and wait on the subsequent city coffer to, to kick in later, once we, we know that it's available. And what the commissioner is referring to is on the EDC meeting earlier, we discussed the fact that our business community is going to be hit with some of the new restrictions that are being imposed by the federal government and the state, and as they unfold, we're going to wait and see what the federal government does as far as small business loans and relief efforts are, and we're going to try and accelerate that as a city. In other words, if the federal government decides that raising canes deserves a thousand dollars, and we get written confirmation from that, that they're going to be giving them a thousand dollars for their losses, the city may, once we understand the documentation is guaranteed, we may come in with our coffer and accelerate the payment to them, in lieu of that money coming back to us, thereby keeping all the, the business in city of FAR afloat if need be. And so we're committed to be, to doing that, but once we get confirmation, because right now, only the House has passed it, we're waiting for the Senate, and obviously for the President to sign it, and that's what Commissioner Medina is referring to, and we're going to keep some money in reserve to help our local business leaders. And so any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Seven C, consultation with the Board of Commissioners, hiring the Public Utilities Director, this was executive session, no action needed. D, consultation with Board of Commissioners on city festivals, also this was tied to the, to the disaster declaration that was taken up already, and consultation with the commissioners on Corona nineteen, this was mitigation measures from the city also taken up, no action needed. Eight A, consideration, action, if any, authorizing city manager to award purchase of police safety equipment for the fleet to GT distributors using byboard number five-two-four-dash-one-seven.